All right, welcome to Mountain City Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, September 23rd. It's 6:01, we're in Mountain City Council Chambers, and we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we got our agenda. Do we have any amendments? Jesse, do we have any amendments?
No amendments.
Okay. Is the mic working? They weren't working last night either. You can hear us? Talk loud. Uh, no amendments. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
All right, got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that's approved. And we got our consent agenda. Does someone want to go through those?
Excuse me, is your microphone working?
We just said that, no. I'm just trying to talk loud, so.
Microphones aren't working.
They're not working. I'll try to talk loud. Does someone want to go through our consent agenda?
I can do that.
Okay.
Consent agenda, A, approve payment of claims. B, approve minutes, September 9th, 2025, City Council Regular Meeting. C, approve Resolution 2576, approving variance at 1705 Baywood Shores Drive, planning case number 2509. D, approve Resolution 25-77, approving public lands permit after the fact on Devon Commons for property at 4805 Island View Drive. E, pay request number one in the amount of $1,211,372 to GMH Asphalt Corporation for the 2025 Street Improvement Project. F, pay request number one and final in the amount of $114,866 to Allied Blacktop for the 2025 Seal Coat Project.
All right, does Council have any questions on those or want to pull any of them? Okay, here and none. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Okay, got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, two seconds. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Herrick?
Aye.
Councilmember McIneney?
Aye.
Councilmember Pugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Costellano?
Aye.
Mayor Hole?
Aye.
All right, so if you were here for A through F, all that passed, and you can stay if you want. Number five, we got comments and suggestions from residents that their item is not on the agenda. If you want to come up, you can get three minutes to talk. Can you give us your name and address?
Sure. Jane Iguard, 1386 Rest Point Road in Orno. And I'm not a resident, but I think I'm bringing something to you that is very important to all the members of your community. In my dealings with the Orno Police Department over the years, I've come to realize there's a big issue. It's not with the officers, because when I've dealt with the officers, they're typically competent, courteous, helpful, and all that. It's with the leadership of the police department. So I did a data request from 2011 to now about all the complaints and resolutions for the Orno Police Department. And if you look through here, there's 38 of them total. I think seven of them are preventable accident or damage to property or violation of pursuit policy, which is all easy to document and it's hard to run away from. There's one that's blacked out here. And I read the statute they wrote, and it's got something to do with undercover officers. So I'm sure that's why that one was redacted. But then, out of the 38 items on here, 30 of them are complaints against the Orno Police Department, and I personally know that number's low because several complaints made by my wife and I aren't even on here. But out of 30 of them, how many do you think the Orno Police Department exonerated themselves from? That's right, 30. Our Orno Police Department is always right, and the citizens are always wrong. That statistic is so improbable, it's ridiculous. And I brought that to the Orno Council, and it's important to me that we really get some leadership in this community, in the police department, where residents are respected. I know a young lady in town that's been up here with me who's had numerous violations in policy and such by the Orno Police Department. They exonerate themselves. And the guy who exonerated himself, Adam Edwards, is city administrator, I personally know, had three policy violations. But they won't let us see the report. So we have no idea what's going on, really. This has been a long history with the Orno Police. I remember a number of years ago, when my son had a few issues as a lot of kids like I did. And I had told the police beforehand, if you're ever going to talk to my son, you need to call me first. They waited till I was out of town. They smashed my $5,000 door in, even though the door on the other side of the house was wide open and there was an officer standing there. And then, they put my son in handcuffs for hours while they searched our house. And my daughter, they made her sit in a chair in her underwear for hours in a cold house, no matter how many times she asked, can I get some clothes on? This is the leadership at the Orno Police Department. We made a complaint about all of this? We did nothing wrong. We're the police, right? And this is so frustrating to me, because not only is this so statistically impossible or improbable, there's a bunch of things that you all don't even know yet that I'm working on. I've obtained the body cam footage from the Julissa Thaler arrest, and it's horrendous what these cops did that day. It's just truly horrendous. And it got to the point, after being on the side of the road with her for an hour and 15 minutes, one of the officers said, even though numerous officers said there's a smell of death coming from this car, one of the officers actually said, it'd be my pleasure to drive you home. I really know people, some people up here are concerned about the Orno Police. I am too. And if I was on this council, I would be thinking about another solution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Can you give us your name and address?
Sure. Lori Springer, 6021 Chestnut Road in Mount. So I just have a couple of, I guess, questions regarding the parks discussion. I'm curious, at the last meeting, because I was here, I thought it was determined that the Parks Commission was going to be part of the next meeting about the parks. So I was curious why they weren't part of today's meeting? And maybe that was something that you had determined with them, but just seemed like not following through on what was stated at that meeting. And I'm also wondering, how do you determine what is a viable park? Because I hear what you're saying about the empty lot and that kind of thing, but just because a park doesn't have equipment on it or a field doesn't make it not a park to other people. What might be interesting to you might not be interesting to you. So that determining what's a viable park is not really a black and white issue, I guess I would just point out. And this is just more of a general question. What is the role of a city council member? To propose changes that you want personally or what your constituents are asking for? Because I think there's a big difference there, and I think it's really important in your role as a city council member to remember that. And then, I haven't been to a ton of meetings, so this might just be my lack of knowledge, but you referred to a lib meeting? What's a lib meeting?
Lid.
A lid?
Lake Improvement District.
Oh, gotcha. I was like, what is that? Okay. That's, yeah, thank you for that clarification. And then, just a reminder to everybody, just to be respectful with your words and your tone to each other and to the people that you serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else want to come up? Can you give us your name and address?
Hi, name is Sam Janiki. Address is 4722 Gordon Road. I live right across the street from Dune Park. Been there for about 10 years now, so I have the lovely pleasure of working from home my entire career, and I've been able to stare out the window at that park for 10 years now. I've been able to watch how it's been used, see kids in the neighborhood use the park in so many different ways. And it's been really fun raising my own children in that park as well. So I just wanted to come up and talk about how I'm a little concerned of the talk of turning it into a dog park. Few things behind that is because I recently looked, I have a dog. I've gone to all the dog parks around. There are three dog parks within 15 minutes of this building. So it seems a bit crazy to put another one in, especially in a residential area. And I don't know if anyone's aware, but in 2020, they almost shut down the Minawaska Dog Park, sanitary reasons. It was unsanitary. The city was having to spend way too much time trying to clean it up, upkeep, and all the cost behind that. And it took a tremendous effort to get that back up to code. They were planning on shutting it down indefinitely. And that is not within any residential area. It is a wooded lot, not by any homes. So if you're trying to put a dog park in the middle of a residential area and there's the possibility of it being a sanitary issue, I'm very concerned for my children of that. It's just, that seems like that would be something that we shouldn't be doing in that close of an area of homes, so. I just want to come up, I guess, I missed the last time, I think last month's workshop, I missed being able to have a public comment on that. But I'm very adamant about our parks. They get used tremendously. I know there was some talk of Dune being underutilized, but the fact that there isn't equipment on there doesn't mean it's not underutilized. It's utilized in a different way. And that's, I get to see that every single day, the fact they work from home. So it's, it's just, I would like to see that one not on this list because of the fact that it's used so differently than so many other parks.
All right, thanks.
Good information. Thank you.
All right, give us your name and address.
Giuseppe Mendelio, 4517 Tuxedo Boulevard. I live by the Chevron, Chevron Extension Park. We watch it every day. There are people walking dogs there every day, playing with their dogs. There's people playing soccer there. That park is used a lot. To get rid of that park doesn't make any kind of sense to me, even if it's a tiny little park. I can't imagine that the net profit from the park would do the city any good. It's too small. There's a lot right next door that they're trying to sell. It's been for sale for a long time. And it's gone down and down and down in value because nobody wants it. But the people are using that park. It's being used by people every day. I sit in my window, because we look down on the park, and I watch people walking through there. I've gotten to know my neighbors. I've just moved into the place. And it's, it's fun to see the park being used. The other concern that I have is that I don't feel like there's some studies here. You talk about the lake, the lake, I can't remember what you just said. It was like-
Water improvement district?
Yeah, you know, the water drains off the street, drains into the park. It drains into the park and then filters through into the lake. If you suddenly put a property on there, how's that going to work? Has there been some studies on that? We've watched this new paving thing that you did with the rocks and the tar, and watched it all wash down the street into the lake. And if it wasn't for the park capturing some of that, I don't know what would happen. You know, you'd suddenly get more pollution in the lake. I think the parks are imperative to what's going on in Mount and keeping the lake clean. As soon as you cover that area with some sort of building, then there's one less place where the water's being filtered through. So take that into your thoughts when you're thinking about what the parks actually do besides people using them. And they use the park every day.
Good to know.
Cool, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Jenny Sewell, 6511 Bay Ridge Road, Mount. I live in the Bluffs neighborhood, and it sounds like, so far, what's been said about it, people may not understand exactly kind of how that's laid out. It does look like it's just a lot between two houses, and it is. But there is a reason why they did that lot in that neighborhood. There's not a lot of flat space in that neighborhood. It's very, it is called the Bluffs because there's a lot of, you know, height and drop down. So our house specifically had very little. We have really no flat space. So we actually use that a lot. I had little ones when we first moved in. That was extremely important to us, finding parks in general. You know, being able to stroller and walk to a park within our house, anyone's house, I think that's a huge sell. So I love that we're talking about it. I love that you guys are trying to improve, you know, just in general, how many parks in that area. There's really no parks at all for little ones. South Saunders, North Saunders, there's nothing over, like, I know that's Minatrisa, but kind of in our whole area, there's really nothing. So having that, I actually think, is still really valuable. I think that putting a playground on that space would be amazing for that neighborhood. There's a lot of little ones coming up into that neighborhood. I think you would add a ton of value to those homes and just to the property in general of that neighborhood. It's a small little community, it's just a little loop. So, but I do think you would get kids from Saunders coming over. Anything that's like walkable from our house, there's, you know, quite a bit. I think if you put a playground there, I know that's like more investment, but if you're looking at the grand scope of things, I would really like you to consider, you know, look at like how far away it is to get to each park and like, does this make sense to add another one here? I know that we go up against Minatrisa right here on the edge, but there really isn't anything else until you get to WRA, which there's no sidewalk and there's no access to that. So I'd really consider keeping it. I know, well, I don't know for sure, but pretty sure one of the owners does not want to sell or buy that piece of land. So you would end up selling it maybe to the one owner on just one side, and it's actually the side of their house. So it would just be kind of an odd situation to have that be owned by that one house. Nothing against them, but I just think, like, if they put in a fence, that would be really odd. You'd have like the street and then just one big lot with like one big fence, which isn't really anywhere else in the neighborhood like that. That's not a common thing. So, anyway, just something to think about. I think that property is uniquely to that specific neighborhood. There is a lot of value in that, so consider it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, give us your name and address.
Brian Gordon, 3057 Dundee Lane. Reading, I'm obviously a neighbor right next to Dundee Lane. You guys have been talking up for a while. And one of the notes up there was, had talked to the neighbors about the usage, and it didn't get used. I've raised three boys in that home, so I've been living there since 1998. And that park does get used. There was actually two moms at that park with their four children today before I left for the meeting, and I asked them, hey, would you be willing to give me your name and number so I could speak at the meeting and let the council members know that the park gets used? And the parents that were there were Jenny Myers and Eric. They live actually, I think, over by Sherwin Park. And Courtney Grandall and Curtis, and she's a teacher at the school. And they, their kids, it's the favorite park. There's been talk on the document that it's close to Swinson, but Swinson is a ginormous park. It has pickleball. I can hear the pickleball noise from my house up on top of the hill. So if you're trying to find a small, little quaint park, Dundee is your, is your park. You're not going to go to Swinson because it's just, it's near a busy road. You've got the noise of the pickleball, and then there's dogs running all over the place. So if you have small children, this is the park in the neighborhood you're going to go visit. So I just, it looks like probably the best park to sell because there's two homes side by side, and you've got the park and you've got my home. So I just, would just have you really reconsider if that's the plan. And another thing I was looking at sitting in the park before I came here was, if you take a picture from the street, there is a light, there's a power pole, and then there's a hydrant. And those, that distance between there is 24 feet. And I think the typical driveway, a two-car garage for the home that would likely be built there, is probably 24 feet. I think it would be very odd to have a driveway with a pole on one side and a hydrant right literally at the edge of your driveway. So maybe it's not even feasible to put a house there because of just the access that you have on the property. So I'm sure there will be more discussions as this goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess I'd also say I volunteer to mow. I know you guys talked about the maintenance point. I already do mow. It's like my house, all the way up to the thing, so Ryan probably can tell Dundee, your name is spick and span. My OCD doesn't allow me to have it dirty and mow the leaves and rake the leaves. So it's well-maintained, and the lady across the street plants the flowers and the thing. So stuff that the neighbors do, that gets unnoticed.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Can you give us your name and address?
Josh Leonard, 4713 Gordon Road. First of all, I just want to thank you for your leadership. I'm sure it's not an easy job. It's not one that I'd want to do, so I do appreciate that. I want to speak to Dune Park being used as a dog park. Like Sam, I also live right next to Dune Park. Every day, I see people use that park, including Sam's kids as well as several other kids from the community. It really is a valuable green space for them. I myself use it. I appreciate it. My wife and I hammock in the park. It's a really nice peaceful place to get away to. My question is, would this really add financial value or become a net negative to maintain if it were a dog park? I'm not sure how this works, or if you can respond to that.
You're just telling, telling us, and it's not a back and forth thing.
Oh, got it, okay.
Go ahead.
It's my first time.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
One of the big reasons my wife and I decided to move to Mount as opposed to other areas around the metro is because of the raw natural beauty. The lakes, the parks, really drew us in, and I'd hate to see that go away. You know, I grew up running through the outdoors, through the woods, through the fields. It was a big part of my childhood, and I really valued that. And I'd hate to see that, you know, be diminished for future generations. So, again, thanks for your service.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, here and none. We're going to go to number six, Long-Term Financial Management Plan and Utility Rate Study. Kyle here?
Kyle is here, so I'll pick it off once I get through these pictures here. Let some people filter out, too. Hey. I'll just quickly remind the council in a second why we're here, and then Kyle and Noah can stand for questions if necessary.
Do you want to wait for him, or?
Up to you.
Just give it a minute.
He snuck out. I can start.
Do you want to just?
He should be familiar. Well, and I don't have a lot to say other than that, as part of our water meeting going on two months ago, staff had talked about our conversations with the PFA and their desire to see an updated utility rate study related to funding a water plant. So staff was directed to procure a proposal, which we did from Ellers, and that's in the packet. So this is really just the next step involved in eventually paying for a water plant. This is like, this, the idea is that, you know, whether it's we're going to pay for ourselves or, you know, if we can find some funding, we need to show the people how it's going to affect them. And so this is where Ellers comes in. Like I said, Kyle is here. If you want to ask him any questions about the process or the timing or anything, I suppose, but that's, that's the gist of it.
So again, just to recap, if we do, if we get any public money, per se, besides what we've already gotten, we're still going to have to do a study eventually, whether we do it now or later.
Right. I mean, there's, you know, unless we get $30 million from the government, you know, federal or otherwise, the city of Mount will be drawing from the PFA in the form of a low-interest loan, one way or another. And this is one of the things that they like to see before we enter into an agreement.
Okay, got it. All right. You want to come up? All right. So we got Kyle Sawyer?
Sawyer, yeah.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Nice to see you again.
Yeah, good to see you all as well. You know, thank you, Jesse, for the introduction. I've talked to Jesse and Noah kind of at length about the needs of the city and what Jesse mentioned about the loan and doing an update for the utility rate study. We also talked about looking at some of the other funds that have property tax impacts as we talk through at a high level some options of, you know, where franchise fees might be used, some different property tax components. So really, any fund that was in either of those plans that had a property tax element, we've included in our proposal. And it kind of would, we're really work in two phases. We'd be looking at updating a cash flow pretty much immediately upon approval, working with Noah and his team to get that updated to ensure the 2026 rates are set appropriately, and then taking a deeper dive into 2027, looking at the different funding scenarios or options that the city might have for the water treatment plant, as well as the impact that potential move from quarterly to monthly billing might have. So those are some of the key elements that we discussed. But I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay, does Council have any questions for Kyle? I don't. Everybody get it? All right, we have no questions. So what do we get? Do we have a resolution? Number six?
I'm hard of hearing, and I have, I'm very confused. I'm Ellen D. Haven with Cole of Banker. And we seem to have, I'm here for 4D, and somehow we're on six.
I was going to address that for you guys earlier. I saw you guys sitting here, and I knew it concerned that property, but we approved that on the consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting.
I don't know what you just said.
That's, it's approved.
It's approved.
It's approved, you're good.
It's approved.
I did say you could leave. I said if you're here from, for A through F, it is approved. You can leave, or you can stay and watch us. We never know why people are here, though, so.
Or if they just want to hang out for fun, so.
I sent two letters.
So your item is approved. You're done. This is better than any TV show you had.
And you look great tonight. Were you dressed up for the occasion?
No, we always look like this.
Thank you, and you should all go to Cove for dinner.
We do all lunch a lot.
See you later.
Bye-bye.
Okay, sorry, Kyle. We have a-
No resolution. We just would simply-
Motion.
Need a motion to approve the proposal.
Okay. Somebody want to do that?
Just in that many words? Any details that I'd be missing, or? Okay, I guess I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal.
You got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that's approved. Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
All right, number seven, we got 2026 Evergreen Water Tower Coating Project Approval.
Mayor, members of the council.
Yeah.
For the 26, 2026 financial plan, the Evergreen Water Tower For the twenty-six, 2026 financial plan, the Evergreen Water Tower is scheduled to be recoded. And we went out to, for quotes, with Bolton Mink and KLM Engineering. KLM Engineering being the lower quote. KLM Engineering has experience with similar infrastructure projects in Mound, as well as around the region. They also do our water tower inspections and our drawdowns. They help manage our inventory and engineering for all of our radios that are on top of the towers, along with the engineering specs for when we have the water towers cleaned. So upon approval, staff would coordinate a workshop with the city council and KLM Engineering due to preliminary design considerations, project phasing, and scheduling. Workshop would be to ensure alignment of project goals and maintain targeted completion in 2026. Recommended, recommendations is approval of attached proposals for the scope of work with KLM Engineering, water tower coating project for the Evergreen Well Eight Tower. authorize staff to coordinate contracting and scheduling in coordination with the city procurement policies and budgetary provisions. More of the story, give the, we want the okay to move forward with KLM being the engineer for the project.
Okay. Does council have any questions for Ryan?
Yeah, I have a question. So we got the two, like, the proposals, they're like a thousand bucks apart. Is there a
Little bit more.
Strong preference to, like, is there more, is there benefit on going with someone who, do they both know, like, the city very well?
KLM's been doing all of our
Okay.
water tower inspections, drawdowns, all that work for a number of years. But seeing their proposal, we went, we went to Bolton Mink also to get a proposal, and they're doing other communities also, recoding engineering.
Okay.
So I got proposals from both of them. KLM has a history of all of our water tower maintenance on the engineering side here, and they were low quote, so.
I didn't have, like, a preference to one or the other. I was just wondering your, your preference.
I mean, Bolton Mink's been taking care of us for a lot of things. KLM's been our engineering group for the water towers and all the inspections, so I just thought I'd go out to make sure we're aligned in price, and obviously, they were within, yeah, like fifteen hundred dollars or so of each other.
Well, I have an unrelated question, but it kind of has to do with water towers. And this'll be a budgetary question.
Yep.
Our water towers, on Chateau particularly, when do we paint those? Do we have anything in the budget? Because they really look bad.
This is Well Eight getting recoded and painted.
Oh, so recoded does mean repainted. I didn't know.
Yes, but there, there's fixes that need to be done, and that's why Well Eight was put ahead of Chateau.
Okay.
And it's older, and it was painted before Chateau, so this, that's the first one. And in 2027, we're budgeted to do Chateau.
Oh, that's great.
We do have to shut down the tower during this process, so we can't do both in one year. And we have other infrastructure projects going on that we have to schedule this around. So there will be interruptions of, you know, the water getting shifted around the city differently. We'll probably see some discoloration around that time. It'll settle back down while they do the project, and then, then we'll get everything back online, but we can't, we can't, we don't have enough time to get them both done in one season.
And how long are they down when the repurposing is taking place?
That's a better question for KLM. I, I wanna say, you said about a month, but they, they have to do the drop cloth around it. They have to do all the interior and exterior fixes, and then they move forward with the coating.
And remind everybody where Well Eight is?
Well Eight is on Evergreen Road.
Which is?
Sorbo.
Sorbo Park.
By Sorbo Park, yeah.
See, that
Next to Sorbo.
That water tower still looks very nice compared to Chateau.
Yeah. I, so, just so you know, I did talk to Jesse, and I said, is there any way we can flip these two around? And, you know, part of it's a, you know, a NOAA budget committee question, too, 'cause you kinda put it in there for, you know, for certain. So I will say, you said twenty-eight for the next one?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Okay, I thought you said it was later than that.
I think it's twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven. I thought they were back to back.
Well, you know, it'll be nice to paint that, because that Chateau water tower came from our, I'll call it the Tope Phase Administration. Everything was Tope.
Yeah.
So it'll just be nice to bring some life to that water tower. And, you know, that is seen from the lake. It's, you see it when you drive in. It's such an eyesore.
I understand the preference, wanting to do that one first. A couple of years back, we did structural fixes, I'll say, to, to the Evergreen Water Tower to get it to this point.
Yeah.
So we've been crippling it long to get it to, to get to this point, too, we can, so we can get it done at this point, 'cause the, this dollar amount, they, they wanted to push off a couple of years.
So the Tope Phase will continue till at least 2027?
I'm sorry?
On Chateau, the Tope Phase.
Uh, twenty-two, seven?
Twenty-twenty-seven.
We have, we have to look. I, I thought it was back to back. He's thinking it's twenty-eights, but I think they're, they're back to back years, but.
This is happening next year, this one.
Twenty-six.
Yes.
So what coating color are we putting on this?
That, that would be, I want to
We would workshop it.
We would workshop this. KLM will come. They'll show you a whole bunch of designs, so we can make a decision to move forward on what we wanna do.
That'll be so fun.
It's only in another two years.
Might have to run him.
Trying to, you know.
The problem is, everybody screenshots that one.
It won't be after we get done with eight.
Well, after then, we'll say, we'll take a picture of the better one.
And then, when you start building the new?
Won't build new. We're just recoding it.
No, no, I know, but when we get to the water filtration?
Yes.
Then those can be kind of coordinated, so everything looks kinda
We're not getting a new tower. We're just
Oh, we're not getting a new tower for the filtration?
No, no, no.
It's just a new wall.
Oh, okay.
And that'll just be like a little brick building.
Yeah, Tope. A Tope, a Tope brick building.
We're using Tope grates.
So, okay, that, that's interesting to know. So when we get this new filtration system, it'll still be using Well Eight?
Well, Well Eight will still be online. The idea is, Well Three will be decommissioned and be back up. There's still seven and four out on three points, which will be completely decommissioned. And then, Well Eight and the new well that will be drilled up by the future treatment plant will both feed both of the towers.
And two towers will be plenty?
That's what we have now.
Okay, still utilize, okay. Good, thank you.
All right. Is there a motion here?
No KLM, no, no Tope.
Do you just need instructions?
Don't present. Exactly.
We just, do we just do instructions to staff?
A motion to approve the proposal from KLM Engineering.
Want to do it?
Yeah. Yeah, sorry to drag that out. I was just not realizing we both had all that knowledge, so the price was so close. I guess I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from KLM Engineering to move forward.
Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those oppose? All right, that passes. Thanks, Ryan.
With the workshop, they did note that they'll need about an hour and a half. And we should try to get that on the schedule as quick as possible, 'cause they have to do design work to put this out to bed in early twenty-six. So we get a timeline with a contractor, 'cause they only have so many spots every summer.
Like October, or?
He was, we talked about this. What were we thinking?
So, I think I've already spoken for your workshops in October, because one of the things, one of the things we need to do that was a policy decision and a priority of the council was to take a role in our commissions and the members, so we need to formalize that, as well as, I think, maybe do an interview. So I was thinking that could be one of our October meetings, and the other one was the rental code that needs to come back. So the first November meeting is the rescheduled Veterans Day meeting, which will be on a Wednesday, on the twelfth. So that one, as of right now, does not have a workshop.
But you said an hour and a half.
Hour and a half.
So if, if, if the council is willing to try to start at four-thirty, we could do that. We could do, we just pick a different night and just only do a KLM workshop. I mean, that's sort of dealer's choice for you guys.
Wednesday, the twelfth, for the hour and a half.
Just having it before a council meeting. I don't wanna do a separate, I don't think anybody wants to do another, you know.
I'd be okay with Wednesday, the twelfth. It might be difficult for those traveling for, from offices. I don't know.
Make it happen. I'm just thinking an hour and a half. The way we talk, I don't know if that's gonna be enough time, but you really think that's enough? Hour and a half?
Probably two hours.
So you're saying, well, that's what I'm saying, like, if we're talking about design options.
Force it to ninety minutes, so it doesn't turn into two and a half hours.
So what are we, November twelve?
Twelve.
You guys can decide, uh, design it.
Well, if we don't do it now, we're never gonna do it.
Yes.
I say
Confident something?
Four o'clock on Wednesday, the twelfth.
Oh, so we're not meeting on Veterans Day? Oh. Yeah, that, that's fine for me.
How about Kevin?
So what day? October twelfth?
Yep.
November.
Wednesday.
We gotta workshop it from four to six, and then
'Cause the council meeting's not on Tuesday.
Council's after. We'll see you then.
Okay. I'll get them scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Not for nothing, but there's a very popular calendar that is hanging in pretty much every public workshop in the state and probably the country that is the water tower of the year calendar.
Oh, wow.
They would bring in a lot of those examples.
Cool. We wanna be part of that crowd.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, you're competing against a teapot.
Glow in the dark painter.
And the corn cob.
There's always funny ones like that, or like, there's one in Georgia that's a big peach, you know, things like that.
That's true.
Be very fun.
All right. Number eight, we got 2026 preliminary levy and budget. Do you wanna kick it off, or?
Sure, I, I can. So the preliminary budget's attached. We have a PowerPoint as well that I can click through if you'd like to, to just go through that. But the short version before we get going is that there's a, the staff's recommending a six percent levy increase. This was worked through with the finance committee over the course of a couple of different meetings. Every department has had meetings with myself and Noah to, I'd say, hammer it down pretty well. As a reminder, we're still following the financial management plan. We're only in year two of that. Last year, the financial management plan called for a five percent increase. The city council opted to give ourselves a little buffer at six percent and ended up staying there. That's, the recommendation this year again is to give ourselves a small buffer of one percent over the five percent that the FMP calls for. And as a reminder, and I'm sure it's in the, I'd be talking about it in the presentation, but whatever is decided tonight, we cannot go higher later on. We need to have, this needs to be certified to the county by the end of September, and then we'll need to have a final certified by the end of December. But you can only lower your, your levy between now and December. So one percent doesn't sound like a lot, but it gives us a little bit of wiggle room in case something needs to be moved around, or if we need to make some changes prior to a final levy.
So the final budget needs to be set at the second December meeting, right?
Well, you need to certify your levy before the end of the year. And you need to hold up truth and taxation roughly between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and then you can certify.
Just a couple of comments on it. Are we planning on going through the whole thing, or do we have to?
It's your meeting.
Okay.
I can click through it quickly. I can just, we can just stand for questions if you'd like, and
But just, just a couple of high-level things is, there's no, nothing's, you know, we're not adding anything this year. We're not adding extra, we're not deleting any services or anything, but we're also not, you know, adding specifically.
No change in service level.
There's no change in service level. Thank you. So again, we're sticking on the financial plan. You know, we've had a couple of meetings about it with Noah and Jesse, I think Meg at one point. A couple of the things that you noted in here, just for the public, is when you look at, like, budget highlights section, page, like, two, four, eight, eight. You know, again, it's, it's only fifteen grand, but it's fifteen grand. We have to put into the Minnesota Family Medical and Leave Act. So that's, you know, kind of a new thing. The Fire Commission approved a full-time firefighter as of, or it will be effective July first, twenty-twenty-six. And just with the Fire Commission, it's just something that is needed, you know, especially whether we go forward or not with, you know, combining or not. Kind of the duty crew way of going in the future is kind of what I, I think we need and what the chief is saying we need. So the long-term average is like two percent. Like, we don't, we don't raise the fire budget, ever. It doesn't go up. And so this is obviously a bigger increase this year. Now remember, we share with the other cities that are sharing the cost, but local government aid, we used to get, what, four hundred thousand at the peak? We get, is it zero now? We get zero. So that's four hundred grand that the city's gotta come up with, or the taxpayers, right? We got an election year, so if you look at some of the, the budgeted line items, and you see there's like a big, huge percent increase that year. That does happen every couple of years when we have an election, 'cause we have the budget for that, and unfortunately, I have to pay for some of that. We, we've had conversations with our county elected officials in different meetings that they've had and stuff, and seeing like, you know, is there any way that we can offsort this, you know, the cost to someone else, or the state or the county pays it, because it's a huge burden on our, on our employees that have to do everything else that they gotta do during the fall, you know? The short answer is, that's not happening, at least not yet. We don't want them to do the elections, per se, but again, if somehow we gotta, got some money, that'd be nice. I mean, liquor store, I think we said it's a little bit off track this year, but it's still pretty healthy. And then we're hoping by the end of the year, it still looks pretty good. You know, again, we've talked about this plenty of times with the water fund, I think on the next page. You know, we're, we're in deficits with that. We're, part of this long-term financial plan is just to get, you know, kind of back on track. You know, by, was it twenty, thirty?
Twenty-thirty.
Twenty-thirty, we're looking to be kind of where we need to be as a city.
To have a zero cash balance instead of a negative.
A zero, okay. And we're negative four point four?
Seven at the end of twenty-four.
Okay. So again, part of all this is, you know, we're paying our bills, unfortunately, unfortunately. You know, sewer fund, same thing. What's our, what's the number on that one? I don't see it here.
The sewer fund?
Yeah.
That is, that's positive cash flow at Storm Store.
Okay.
Storm Store is like two point five?
Sorry, Storm. Storm is two point five million negative. So again, those, the storm and the water, we're trying to get positive. You know, recycling, that's normal year by year. HRA, which we'll talk about in a second. When I go to page, I think it's two, four, nine, one, that one, you have the table. You know, again, you can kind of get these to say what you want them to say, but when you look at the projected city tax rate, you know, we've actually been, you know, twenty-twenty-one, thirty-nine point eight-four, forty percent. Twenty-twenty-two, down to thirty-two. You can see the change in tax capacity, especially in twenty-three, twenty-three, increased a lot. But then twenty-twenty-five, we lost, you know, one percent tax capacity. You can see the local government aid there, too. We still have a double A-plus rating, too, and part of that's because we're on a financial plan, and we're hopefully sticking to it. Just a couple of other things. I asked the city manager to get us just the preliminary budget that's out there. And these are all public, right?
Yeah, they're all pulled from
They're all pulled from their agendas or something. So again, we're looking at six, and remember, we need five, no matter what. That's what we did last year. We need five to stick to the budget, to stick to the plan. We put in a one percent buffer. We can always come back to five and quote that. Last year, we did the same thing. We were six, and then we just put the extra one aside for all the projects we got coming up, all the street improvements and stuff. Ornol, six point seven-two. St. Bonnie, four point five. Spring Park, nine. Minutrista, nine point nine-two. Watertown, eight point five. Excelsior, eleven point seven-three. And Tonka Bay, fifteen point six-five.
Where are you? Is that in our notes?
I just got this.
It's their preliminary.
I just got a last-minute email.
It's all their preliminaries, and why is that? It's like seven and a half.
Yours is seven and a half.
Are you gonna send that to us?
I, Jesse can, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see.
So my point is, you know, we're at six. Again, Ornol, six. St. Bonnie, four and a half. Ornol, six point seven-two, to be exact. St. Bonnie, four and a half. Spring Park, nine. Minutrista, nine point nine-two. Watertown, eight and a half. Excelsior, eleven seventy-three. And Tonka Bay, fifteen point six-seven. Part of our discussion, our, in our, our commission meeting that we had was, you know, we don't know what we're gonna do with this water treatment plant, right? So like, let's not get ahead of ourselves, right, with, you know, we could go up ten, fifteen, I mean, we can do, you know, as long as we all agree, and we go with it. And our thought is, let's get this utility study first, right? Let's see what that looks like. Let's see what that looks like. If for some reason we decide to go forward or not, you know, then next year we have to come back and maybe, you know, look at doing what we got to do. But right now, I mean, five was in the, was in the financial plan. We're saying six. By December, if we all want to go, anything less than six is fine, we just can't go over six.
So going back to 2024, you know, when we had to do the, rip the Band-Aid off and, I don't remember where we were at financially at that point, but are we still feeling that that was a really good decision? Because that was a really hard decision to make?
Yeah, I mean, it kind of, that was like the first step in the financial plan and we're just sticking with it. And we were talking about this in our finance committee meeting too, that like if, whether it's in the newsletter or not, or how we're going to like speak to those increases and how it kind of went like, you know, and it does it again later, if there's 29 maybe isn't there a little, and then it's, but it's a lot of like non-tangible stuff, like just getting our funds healthy. You know, Mayor mentioned the LGA's gone, you know, we're kind of like making, people are kind of wondering what they're getting and why it's going up, and it's like, at least we can speak to it, like our debt position is so much better than it was 10 years ago. I mean, it's not like the funnest, there's no decrease in service level, but there's, we're not adding anything either, so it's.
So if we keep working the plan, and, and I hate to bring this up, but if we keep working the plan and let's say we get enough money for this water treatment plant, are we going to, are we going to ever see ourselves out of the, you know, the deep?
So by 2030?
Okay.
We should have no utility funds, well, take this storm sewer and put that aside, the water fund will be at a, basically, an even cash balance.
2030?
Yeah, by 2030. If we keep with the plan of funding our capital reserves, by 2030, we would not have to issue debt for the final four years of the street projects. That was the goal, was to reduce our reliance on debt. If we continue with our utility rate increases and let's take the water treatment facility and put it aside, by 2030 would be the last year we'd issue debt for utilities as well. So that means the final three years of improvements would be free of debt issuance. So we will be issuing debt for levy-supported items every year through 2029. In the final four years, we wouldn't have to. Utilities, the next five years, in the final three years, we wouldn't have to. Now that's a lot of stuff that can come in between time, right? Stuff gets added to the CIP that we didn't plan for, other circumstances, but we are, the first two years have been really, really good with sticking with the plan, better than hoped.
I mean, that's great news.
And I like having that little buffer too, it's like just in case, you know, because there's always something.
Well, I mean, we, we surf, well, I guess not, because we kept at five of 21, 22, 23.
You know, barring the water treatment plant, part of the discussion and everything, it's like if we keep doing, you know, like speaking to good decisions, it's like we won't be at the top for debt, you know? We can be in a good spot.
I mean, that's just really great news.
So and just to add, to think to some more context to that question too, I mean, that goes back to the utility rate study conversation from 20 minutes ago, and that if we had a water plant on it, the mandate from the PFA is going to be that we pay for it and show how we're going to do that. So that'll just be supplemental. So the plan is the plan, and if we, the water plant would be, you know, an extra thing that we will demonstrate how we'll pay for, so that it will be different, you know, but it's, it will be, it won't affect our, we'll call like the base financial management plan that we have, if that makes sense.
Thank you. And great to have, you know, Noah and Jesse and our budget committee.
Just last comment, the county just proposed a max levy of 7.79, so it's, it's coming.
When is our next newsletter?
Ours or?
Not until November.
Okay.
Yeah, so the goal is hopefully new Maggie.
Our new person we're going to have, or maybe you guys will help me.
It's going to be me, I think.
Okay, anyway.
But.
Jesse's going to help me hopefully put all this into nicer graphics, or maybe you can help us, into chewable, right? So for the newsletter.
I think it's important for the residents to really understand.
Right.
Because even, and I've tried to talk to Noah a couple of times, but you've been obviously busy, and I've been told you've been busy. But I have had a couple of calls recently on, you know, the increase going to the nonprofits and the churches. Has anybody else?
For like the water?
Yeah.
Or the Frank Jacksons?
Like, you know, it's increased 1,000% basically, because they were not doing anything prior to this.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything.
I have gotten a couple of complaints. But I still think we did the right thing, and I'm glad to hear nobody else has, because I have a couple of them written down that when you're free, I'll come in and kind of go over it with you.
Okay.
So the one thing that we're, we're talking about is, like, when people, like, when I first wanted to run for council, right, it was really about a crosswalk. It was about that, the one, right, that we got done. That was kind of the main thing I first really wanted to do. But it wasn't about the budget, it wasn't about, I didn't know what the budget was, I didn't think, I didn't care, right? I'm just like, why do you guys take more money every year?
And why don't we have a crosswalk?
And why don't we have a crosswalk? Taking more money, what's changing?
Well, so it's true. I mean, it's like, it's a, you know, that's a dangerous thing, that should be, you know, but, you know, every year, every year, every, you know, our insurance, or the, you know, my insurance just got camped, they're like, we're not doing your state anymore.
No.
Great, so now I got to go find another, you know, house insurance thing, great. And I'm sure it'll be more, right? It's going to, it's always more and more and more. And that's the biggest thing I think I struggle with is like, what are they, what are you getting for this, right? What are you getting for what we're doing here? And part of the problem is it's not sexy, it's like we're paying off debt, you know, we're getting out of a hole, or we're, you know, eventually if we do this water treatment plan or, you know, we can say, well, it's that, and that's what you, you know, you're paying for that. This is like, we're just, you know, kind of getting out of, you know, a hole, and we're in a four and a half million, in a two and a half million dollar hole. We're just, we're doing that, first of all. Second of all, we're running a, you know, a city, and there's things that you have to pay for, and people, and budgets, and lemoine parks, and, you know, so that's the thing I think I want to work on really with, and I kind of asked Jesse a little bit and Noah actually to type up some kind of thing that we can, you know, put in there that people go, okay, you know, I get why, you know, what we're doing here, and I can see, you know, what, you know, why, the head of the county is raising by six, seven, or whatever.
I think it's really important too for the residents to see that, and, you know, we talked about this a little bit at one of the last meetings you made a presentation at, but I really think it's important just to do layman bullet points for people to just be able to look at it and go, okay, I really get, you know, how we got here, how we're digging out, and, you know, so they can see light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah.
And so I think that's great, and I'm sure it'll be hard for you, Noah, because, you know, you are a math guy, a math whiz. So kind of like anybody who's in a business has a hard time going to layman terms, but I think it'll be really, I think it's mandatory that we do that.
And it might be two big areas, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll do some charts and like, even like in your slides, I know we didn't go through them all, but, you know, like the tax dollar, you know, the city is this portion and, you know.
Yeah.
But, you know, even the county, I mean, I know that was a nightmare for three days, but they're beautiful now, right? They're beautiful, nice roads, right?
Yeah.
Well, engineering standards. I fought for it, it didn't work. But, right, I mean, beautiful roads, so then you go, oh, my county dollars are going to, you know. And again, just on this, and because the county's coming too, you know, we did have a mayor's meeting with the county, and so we did talk about, I basically said to our commissioner, I said, you know, what are you cutting, right? What are you cutting? And unfortunately, they're, they're, they're cutting some things through just attrition of like people, you know, not working anymore, and then, you know, now you got to do two jobs or, you know, whatever. The other thing is they took over the hospital, right? So the board took over, took, took over that anyway, so that's, that's another challenge right now. And then, what were the other, there's one other major thing with the county, remember that?
Well, I mean, staffing is.
A lot of staffing.
But that seems to be mostly the hospital.
Yeah, the hospital was not a great part of it, but at the same point, it's something that, you know, someone's got to pay for. So anyway, but I just challenged her and I said, hey, you know, people want to know, you know, what you're cutting, and again, they said, well, we are cutting through attrition of not renewing things or not, you know, whatever, so. Yeah, it was, because we had this with our, our union a couple of years ago, where the, the union contract came in a lot higher than, I guess, what, what we probably would have put on paper, and that's, I think, the same thing with the county.
They have a lot of unions.
Yeah. So anyway, that's, I guess, my comments on this, so unless anybody else wants to talk about it, we're looking to do six. Again, remember, that's the top we can go.
But we can still back down by December if we decide 5.5.
You can only stay at six or go down.
Okay.
I think we just, last year left it.
We did.
And Councilmember Costelano might have a couple items, I don't know if you want to talk about it now or later, but that we might try to look at by then, you know, to see if, okay, that extra little percent, if we want to, you know, do more inspections or, you know, this or that. I know you kind of mentioned a few things, but.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't really know that I'm ready to talk about anything tonight and it wouldn't impact, like, the change, what the preliminary would be set at, so I just thought for a future meeting I'd bring up a few things, but I don't, I don't have anything much else for tonight. I just like the idea of getting something in the newsletter to explain, you know, even though it's like the least exciting thing, but like how we're improving our financial health and what that means for later, if we're needing to borrow money or fund something else, it's at a minimal impact to residents and, you know, just kind of getting our overall picture looking better than it has for a long time.
And, and you're going to be doing this after we find out if we get any additional funds from the government? You know, because then we have a whole discussion about the water plant.
Yeah, this is like, would just stay separate, you know, like if the, what we find out later in the year, you know, we're setting the preliminary now, that can't change, it would just be pushed to a year, you know?
Yeah, really, we're just saying six tonight, and then, again, five is just to stay on the financial plan. So if we don't, if the appetite in December is like, no, let's just stick to the five, we do that.
Or we do the same thing as last year and we just stuck with six.
Somewhere on here, maybe it is on the slides, it says like how much, you know, per average house or whatever.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, it's on page 2535, and so just, you know, if, if your house is worth 250 grand, the annual increase is $23. Your month-to-month increase is a buck ninety-two. If it's, yeah, it's up on the screen there. You know, if you're 450,000, it's $46 more a year. 750, it's 85 bucks. 1.2, it's 143, so, and that's, and then per month, if you look at things monthly versus annual.
If I'm understanding this correctly, the water fund is currently running at a deficit, but that will zero out by 2030?
The plan is to be cashed in for by 2030.
But I mean, already this year, what are we running at, like, like four or five?
If you take out part of what we fronted for the water treatment facility, we're projected to come in positive cash flow of 300 grand.
Okay.
But we won't know that, I mean, the utilities plays a big part in where.
Right.
There's some leg with that.
And then the other question I have, which is just, I don't know these things, but the vacuum truck, that's $900,000, to me, that's a lot of money. They're saying that they're having some maintenance requirements and issues with it? And so do we know that that's going to happen in 2027? I mean, what's the gut feeling from Public Works? Is that going to be something that we?
It's something that's going to happen.
And if it does die?
It's going to have to move up from the CIP, and 27 is looking likely. We can't afford not to have one of those.
Right.
With the 30 lift stations. The goal of the 2024 debt issuance was not to issue debt for sewer for the next decade.
Right.
This will challenge it. It's good that you approved the financial management plan, because that's one of the things I want to work with Kyle to see if that can be saved.
Okay.
But that will be challenged.
This is part of the reason too, I think, not speaking for the mayor, but like when we were in the finance committee meeting, is just saying like why we want to do a little bit of a cushion, just because there's always something.
That's why I'm leaning towards.
And not just the minimum.
I mean, this thing, I mean, vehicles, you know, first of all, they just made an announcement on the news that I think just repair costs went up like 30% over the last couple of months. So even if we have to do these heavy repairs or replace it, that truck may not only be 900,000, it may be a million three, you know, based on the increase in value and or cost with the truck. So I mean, and we have to have one, right? I mean, what's the backup plan if it dies? I'm assuming we can rent them from somewhere, because I know we pulled some in the last time we had a big rainstorm.
It'd be rental, but with the 30 lift stations?
You have to have.
We're not a normal city that has one or two or three lift stations.
Right.
It's a major deal.
Yeah.
So they're monitoring that truck very closely, and it is looking like 27.
And when we do like a little bit above the minimum, I mean, it kind of just helps our CIP stay.
Clean, right?
Or like, you know, not ahead of schedule, but it doesn't get behind.
Noah, can you, do you know offhand how much we got in interest income?
We were in the mid 400s last year. We are, we have higher cash levels this year, even though less interest rates, I suspect it'd be around that amount.
Yeah, so we, I mean, that's pretty good. And so that's just something that, I mean, we're kind of expecting some of that, but not that much.
Like 472,000, that's about my head, somewhere like that.
Yeah.
You know, as I went through this whole thing, Jesse and the budget committee, I don't see anything, are we looking forward to budget for new employee, for either Public Works or wherever, Jesse, you feel that there's a need for either a support person or, and you know, we've talked about this for a couple of years, and Public Works has been devoid of enough workers. When are we going to bring that into play and actually work that into the budget?
So one thing that Councilmember Costelano said is that, and maybe that's for next year, is that we look at having a workshop, so a finance workshop between all of us? Yeah, it's, again, it's different, because I have my own thoughts in my head, and then, you know, you ran me in in a different corner, I kind of, you know, and then Noah's like, no, you guys are all wrong.
You're the tough guy.
Yeah.
But, you know, Jesse, you know, you're the only one, because it's your staff, and I know that you could, we've talked about it, I know you would benefit by extra hands.
Well, say what you did, say what you already did.
What do you mean?
With the Maggie's position.
Oh, yeah, I do have an accepted offer for deputy city manager, so that is in, that's, should have somebody in by November, which will be very nice, because it's been, been thin, but.
You did say that you had a lot of superstar.
We had 40 applicants.
That's fantastic, wow.
That's unheard of, but, so I've got some thoughts that maybe aren't necessarily appropriate for a public meeting, but, you know, there's a lot of options what we could do as far as how you'd want to determine what staffing level's appropriate. I mean, what I know about Mound is that it sounds like we used to have larger staff, which isn't necessarily the right answer, it just was the way it was. I think that this council is really focused on service levels and providing services and ultimately, staff is how you do that for the most part, but staff is also the most expensive part about running a city. So, you know, even adding one administrative person in the office is, if it's general fund, that's, that's a percent on your levy right there, and then some. So it's, you know, I don't want to be flippant and say, yeah, we should just, you know, add three people, because I think that you all five would, would want to think about this really carefully, but it is, it's, it's something I think that would be a great conversation to have, and as much as doing studies gets a little exhausting, that can be a way to do it too. I mean, there's plenty of case studies about what our neighbors and what our cities that are similar, you know, they're not Mound, but they're in similar positions as far as what services are being provided and the population of the city and things like that to determine what it is, we, you know, what's the staffing level look like? population of the city and things like that, to, to determine what it is we, you know, what, what's the staffing level look like in those cities and what's appropriate to Mound, or what, what could be appropriate, you know? I think we could probably put together a pretty good list of things that we would, if money was no object, what we would like to see between Public Works and, um, you know, the, in the office, but, I don't know, that's a long-winded answer to just say, yeah, I, it'd be a great conversation to have, but I mean, I, I think it's not how it has been and I wouldn't want to make a big change without the council being fully on board, because it, because it would be a budget driver.
But, but again, I, I feel like the last couple of years, that's been no part of our conversation within the budget. And we've all known that we've, we've been short staff and, you know, I just think it would be helpful for all of us to at least, again, project into the future and say, you know, by twenty twenty-seven, or twenty twenty-six, you know, we really are going to, and especially with Public Works, when you look at the added maintenance needs, that especially loss like comments is going to require. And so, I just, I, I, I worry about burnout, I, I worry about attrition, I mean, Collette's been there, what, twenty-some years?
Twenty-six?
So, you know, and she wears a lot of hats too, you know, she's been here a long time, so I know that you've thought through this going forward, I, I just hope that we are all up to speed and knowledgeable to what the needs may be in the future and we're thoughtful to the budget. That's all I'm saying.
And I think it sort of goes back to what Mayor Holt was talking about, uh, you know, as far as how we get some of this budget stuff out into the public and, for the most part, when people know what you're doing and why you're doing it, they don't, they don't get upset about it, you know, as far as residents and where are my tax dollars going? I, I think we could do a good job if the answer was, or if, if the answer to this potential question was providing more services via adding staff, we could demonstrate what, what you're getting out of it, you know, whether it's efficiencies at City Hall, or it's more maintained, better park system, or, you know, whatever it is, so I, that doesn't scare me, though, like I say, I'm not the one that does the voting on it, so, um, you know, you five would have to be comfortable with it, but that, that's something we could work through as well, is just, if we determine that a s- a higher staffing level could, could provide more services, we can demonstrate that and make that part of the communication too.
Noah, what are, what are your thoughts on this?
So, just for historical, the last cut we did at the city, as far as absorbing a position in the City Hall, was twenty twenty. So, up until that point, we did have another position. I, I don't have a comment one way or the other, but that just, you know, that's the last time we've had another body and we absorbed that position in twenty twenty.
Okay.
As far as Public Works.
So, I think, there's two parts of this. One is, what do we think we want?
Yeah.
Right.
And then, what do they want, as in, especially Jesse, because Jesse came toward us, each department said, this is our needs for this year.
Right.
And they brought it up, he read, brings it, he brought it to the, the budget committee, and then we kind of go, okay. So, I mean, I, I guess if you said, hey, we're, we need this, or you're hearing us, that you need something, you know, an extra body, now maybe we should, should have been more, we, we want you to do this extra thing, or.
I was going to say answering.
I feel like we've asked you from the day you were hired, you know, to, to really, you know, take your time to understand your staff and your needs and, you know, you're two years in. So, obviously, you know all of the, you know, pluses and minuses that go on all day long with the staff and, and whether we agree and can say, yes, let's do it, I still think we need an honest uh, request, or at least to justify why you're asking, so we can be thoughtful in the budget going forward, because I feel like this could just keep getting kicked down the road, you know, for a long time.
It can, um, but to answer your, I think the first question that you had had was like, are, are we, what's our plan? Are we going to add, you know, like there was talk of like a communications person or more help for Public Works and just being one person on the finance committee, I kind of not, I haven't been like seeking that out, I just trust that, you know, like they're managing their departments and if they, you know, if there's a need and they're like, look, we really need somebody, it's like then I would just hope that they're comfortable bringing it and
I do too, and I hope it doesn't, to the detriment of their, you know, well-being, you know, by the time they come and.
I can appreciate that Jesse maybe didn't want to add three staff members in the first, you know, six months of, you know, something like that, but I think everyone's comfortable in bringing that up and if it's, you know, a real need, that we would look at it in the budget and then all talk about it, but, I don't know, I've been kind of passive and.
One thing that, with this new deputy assistant job, because you, you kind of modified the job requirements a little bit, right? Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Well, what I'll say is, I'm going to be, try to be, uh, political here. Well, one of the conversations we had with everybody we interviewed was, I mean, I think one of the first questions was, you know, recognize that you're going to be wearing a lot of hats, you know, this is, it's, and we weren't shy about that this is, that's what we need, is somebody that can come in and work in every department, and that's sort of the role of the deputy city manager, assistant city manager in any city, but, you know, we said, it's a lean staff and there's, and it's not that there's anything wrong with that being the case, but, um, that was a, a major factor in these conversations was like, you know, what, can you come in and, and maybe, one of the things that I definitely was asking about was, you know, what can we do to make things at City Hall maybe more efficient? You know, what, what procedures and policies can we be putting into place that might not necessarily eliminate the need for another person, but, you know, is that a quarter of a FTE or something that we could facilitate? And so, once again, a long-winded answer to probably a short question is just that, I, I don't know that we know exactly that there should be one or five more people or something, but I think that we have an opportunity to make things probably a little more efficient and just sort of keep moving forward as a staff. Public Works is a little bit different, because, you know, we have, if you've, if you've got thirty-eight parks and you need to mow the lawn more often and you don't have enough people, that's just, you know, logistics, but, um, on the flip side of that, if you have too many people and you have a dry summer, you're sending people home, so. And now we're, you know, we don't get snow anymore, we get like two big snowfalls, so. I would welcome a conversation among the council as a, you know, from a financial side, and we can gather our thoughts from a, you know, whether it's a wish list, you know, what, what we think we really should, or, you know, if you, like I said, if money was no option or no object, what would you have? And I think that that could come in the form of just looking at our contemporaries, um, you know, between permitting and finance departments, it's not uncommon for cities our size to have, you know, a staff accountant or permit tech and things like that, so. But I also think that when things aren't broken, you tend to not feel the need to fix them. So, part of that's too, you know, you get used to this is the size of the staff and we get by and, so, I don't know, I, I, I appreciate the concern and the comments, because I, it's, it's maybe a conversation that hasn't happened in a while, I guess, you know, or if it has, I haven't, not since I've been here anyway, so. I could see that as something going into twenty-six is like, you know, whether it's a staffing study or just some sort of overall approach to how we're, how we're managing the city and its employees with, of course, the budget in mind, we're on an FMP, we're trying to get out of, out of the hole and we're trying to do it very thoughtfully, so. It's a, it's a very large conversation, it's always very important to have.
Sounds like an item for like twenty twenty-six priorities workshop in January, you know?
All right, but you, since you didn't come with, I need this extra person, we're good, we're good for now.
I, I think we're okay right now to get through the preliminary levy.
I mean, you're just going to be excited in November when this new person starts.
I'm going to be very excited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't tell me, I'm coming out of my chair.
Did the rest of your staff get excited and give you input on, you know, when you met, everybody got to meet, the, the candidates?
Yeah, we, uh, they were in on Friday and, um, and it was very nice and
Great.
looking forward to setting things up over the next month for them to succeed and, um, and just keep moving forward.
Sweet.
Yeah, I'm sure it's been a, a heavy plate for you with, with Maggie gone.
I, I don't want to speak for myself, uh, other than to just say that it's, Maggie was doing a lot of different things, so.
And she did them very well.
All right, any other discussion on the levy? All right, on page two, five, four, oh. You got a resolution, does someone want to make a motion?
Uh, I can do that. I'll make a resolution approving the twenty twenty-six preliminary general fund budget in the amount of seven million, is, am I reading the proper?
Yeah.
The correct one?
Just say, make, make a.
Yeah, I gotta say, make a motion to approve resolution.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-five seventy-eight.
Well, I make a motion to approve resolution, resolution number twenty-five dash seventy-eight.
All right, you got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that passes.
I, I just want to say, so, for you, for resolutions that have a number on it, it's accept, an acceptable form to identify to say, a motion to pass resolution number blank.
Okay.
And then it's identified, it's in the agenda, and, and Kevin can always add to it if he wants to in the minutes to identify it.
Well, we never always had the whole number there, right?
No.
That's us, so we just added that.
Yeah.
Recently, so now we can.
Now, now, if there wasn't a number, then you'd have the same.
Then we had, that's why we always.
A motion to pass a resolution to do X.
Okay, so now, B, we're going to motion, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn the city council to the Mound Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting?
I can do that, um, but I want to say thanks to Noah for putting together the budget packet too, it made it like, it's like every year, it's just even easier for my brain to understand. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the city council meeting to the Mound HRA meeting.
All right, you got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? All right, the normal city council meeting is adjourned. Uh, we're reconvening the city council meeting. It's, uh, Tuesday, September twenty-third at seven thirty-one, we just did our HRA meeting. So, now we have to do this in city council. D?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we got, uh, D on page two, five, four, three, if someone wants to make a motion for that.
I would like to make a motion approving resolution two, five, dash, seven, nine.
All right, got a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, those opposed, all right, that passes too. All right, thanks, guys, for all that.
Yeah, thank you for all, everything, the hard work and.
All right, number nine, banners, discussion continuation. So, we just kind of tabled this because of, uh, Councilmember McEnany not being here, so.
Yeah, so, um, I did, um, do a lot of research on this and ran a couple scenarios that might work best for the city of Mound and our businesses, and I did find out that generally, you know, generally, um, chamber of commerce facilitate the business poll banner campaign and that pretty much relieves the city of well, inherent politics that will come along with having to sell and manage a big program like this. So, obviously, it would be in the best interest for both the city and our businesses to part, use more of a partnership model, um, to coordinate this effort. I liken this to, I, I, I first started, the first scenario was thinking, you know, wondering how, because we could get probably a better price on banners, but the cost to the city would be huge because of the time, effort that would be involved managing this program. And I have done probably ten trade shows in my life, put together, done, reached out to, and this would be likened to our local businesses being a vendor. And they do require a lot of handholding and there's a lot of, you know, they, they have certain, they have certain desires for where they might want to poll and we really shouldn't be in that position, so, um, I did go to, I did go and talk to several local chamber of commerces and many of the businesses that were featured on Wyseta, Plymouth, Chaska and Spring Park. And I talked to them about how they felt about who was ever managing their campaigns, and then I went to the printers for those, and I, I feel really, really confident that I left feeling Pauline at, Pauline over at Minuteman Press did run the campaign for Spring Park. And when I first met with her to get some bids just on printing the flags, I didn't feel that she was willing to get on board. I didn't know if it might be because of possible conflict of interest with Spring Park businesses being so close in proximity. But I did go back and we had a really long talk, she is, that she's been doing this her entire career, the marketing aspect side of things, and, um, this will be the second year that they're going into Spring Park, and so they, she's learned a lot of tricks and, you know, I didn't really know if she'd be interested in taking on Mound, because Mound is a much bigger animal, um, more businesses, more polls, um, but she did say yes, and, um, and I feel really, I don't know, really comfortable that she would bring our businesses and Mound pride and a real successful outcome. Um, there would be no cost, and, and again, I had three other, three other companies that I was talking to, but not only does Minuteman Press, Pauline, have a vested interest in a, in a good result and outcome, I, I really feel really confident that she has got this nailed down. It's a really full-time job to do this, so there would be no cost to the city. The city and the city council role would be simply to identify the poll locations and the boundaries and then to approve a graphic, and I, I imagine she'd come in with three, like general, three or four options and we would, we would select. At that point, Minuteman Press would then take full control of coordinating and executing the campaign, start to finish.
Annually, kind of, for schedule?
Yep, it, she would be working then, at this point now, probably with Jesse and Ryan, just to, um, formalize the poll selection and the hanging specifics. Our Public Works Department would be responsible for hanging and removing before following your campaign would begin. The banners would stay up for a year. Um, and just to manage all of your expectations, this will take at least six months to roll out and get ready to, for the campaign, for graphics, to get graphics presented to us, approval, and then to educate, promote and sell to the business, the local businesses. So, just so you know, yes, if I just turned in a design graphic, it would be done tomorrow, but this is a, a, a big campaign and, because Mound has never been part of this, she's going to have a lot of educating to do. She did just bring on somebody on board who they're going to move forward, and this is going to be a real time saver for them. To get, once they get everything, the campaign put together, hopefully, they'll meet with all of the individual, and they have to present this to every single business. It'll be, it would be on a first come, first served basis for businesses, and I'm not going to get into the specifics of, of how she would roll this out, because Mound is a different animal, so I don't want to present the stats that she used for, um, Spring Park. And, and, and it doesn't matter to us, because if we, if we choose to go this direction, we'd be in good hands and, but I do want you to know that the only downside of not taking it on ourselves would be, I do believe she would need a seventy-five percent participation rate for, if we, does. rate for, if we designate fifty polls, you know.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's just not worth their time and effort to set up this campaign, manage to sell, but I feel pretty confident that, you know, once we determine the polls, and I think she did have a couple of good ideas, you know, to maybe look at using all of, you know, fifteen for businesses, and then maybe one-ten for sports teams.
Yeah.
You know, that could be kind of a cool thing, but again, she will take this over. I'm just throwing out a couple of things.
It'd be great to have something up.
Pardon me?
It'll be awesome just to have like, something up, you know?
Yeah, and, and, you know, I, I feel really comfortable that she's just went into year two with this badge of Spring Park banners. So, I guess if the council is agreeable, the next step would be to get Pauline and Minuteman, Minuteman Press in the loop, and I would be happy to kind of facilitate that next step and get Jesse and Ryan in the loop, because I've had a lot of conversation with her.
Okay, so I've done this in, in a neighborhood before, but you said there'd be no cost to the city, but we would, wouldn't we have to install the hangers?
Well, we already have the hangers.
Okay.
The cost to the city, Ryan and the public works would be hanging them and taking them down.
Hanging them up.
Yeah, yeah.
So, there is a cost, so.
And, and I, I meant a dollar amount cost, but yes.
In kind.
What, what, what mound would be participating with in conjunction with them is literally working, designating the polls, and then Ryan and the public works team would be responsible to put them up and take them down at the end of the year, prior to the next campaign kickoff.
And so, because, you know, you can kind of do overload, and because of the way our city's configured, you know, we've got froms, like, from the bridge to downtown, you could say that's all commercial, but then when you go west of Commerce on Fifteen, all of a sudden, you're into residential, and so would we want to extend into residential?
Well, I think we need to be really, really thoughtful in the poll location, because we don't want this to be overkill, and, and I'm sure Pauline will have a lot of, again, she's done this many times, and I, I talked to her about that, too, I just said, you know, I'm concerned about overkill and oversaturation, and she understands it completely, again, this is what she, marketing is what she's done, and for most of her career. So, I'm sure she would work with Jesse and then present to us what their thoughts are on the district, and I think she'll have a lot of feedback on that. You know, for me, it's a little difficult to say, oh, okay, we'll just hand everything over to you, because this is where I usually am a big part in these campaigns, but, you know, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna be gone if I don't run again, and we need somebody on board. I know that the WCC, you know, because we don't have a chamber of commerce, the WCC is really active and, and really amping up their, their, their new member, their new group that's running it, and I have a lot of high hopes for it, you know, Tiffany Betler from Plaid Moose Marketing is her thing, too, so, you know, maybe, maybe after the next two years, WCC might be in a position to approach us to do that.
We, we don't pay for the, the cost of the cities, like, we don't pay for the banners?
No.
We just touch base with her annually about like, what the next ones look like?
She literally, yeah, she would come back to us after the first year and then say, you know, do you have any changes and how you'd like to, you know, brand yourself, and then she would go off and design with our, yeah, and so, through all her work and then the printing, then she would be working with the, or the businesses and then work all that out with them, and, and that really does remove us from some potential really tough situations, so.
Prioritize my own businesses.
Between businesses and not businesses.
When she did it through Spring Park, a couple of the businesses that are on the Spring Park banners, they approached her.
Okay.
To be, to potentially be part of that campaign.
Cool.
But, you know, I, I don't know if any of you guys have been part of a trade show or, I, I, I don't wanna be part of working with, no, I want that poll, no, I want that poll, and, you know, it, it, it's a big, it's a big hand-holding event, and, you know, you want to satisfy every single business, and she'll do a great job with it. So, I, I guess at this point, if you wanna move forward, the next step would be to get her in the loop with Jesse and Ryan.
Yeah, I think we should.
I, I like it. Assuming, you know, you guys come up with a good plan, whatever, you would bring it back at least to us in a workshop or in a live meeting to say, hey, this is what we came up with, or here's the designs we're looking at?
Probably, and most likely, Pauline would be presenting.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I like it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would assume there's some sort of agreement that we need to.
Yeah, we'd have. Yeah.
But, but, I, I didn't hear that, but we, I think we should be involved in the pan, she's gonna need us to define the banner or the polls, and I think we should definitely be involved with that, because that's strategically, it's gonna help her define kind of her outcome, too.
Cool. I mean, are we all on agreement, or do we need a motion to staff?
I think we're okay.
Thanks for doing all the work.
I'll contact her tomorrow.
Be a time that there's actual agreement to be.
Okay, but just, we used to do instructions to staff.
Yeah, just direction is enough of consensus.
I, I think at this point, because this is what she does, she'll kind of lead us to, to where we need to go next, and if we need.
Love it.
Yeah, thanks.
Good job.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it's really an exciting thing, and I, I felt really comfortable with all of the vendors that would be our partnership, but I, I just, Pauline, she's just fabulous, I, I feel her vested interest in the outcome would be such a key factor for, for our businesses.
And she's mound, too.
And she's mound, she's local.
Cool.
Yeah.
Is there business in Spring Park?
Mound.
No, it's a mound, right, right up the street. Yeah, it's right up the street from.
Yeah, she's literally right here.
Yeah, yeah, you could, like, skip to it in like, two seconds.
All right, let's go to the next thing, number ten, comments and reports from councilmembers, Councilmember Q.
I did go to Congresswoman Kelly Morrison's town hall meeting this week, she had one on, you know, obviously, the gun violence issue, it was really nicely done, very tight security. You had to, and this is what you're gonna see in the future, you have to reply that you wanna come, and then the day of the event, they send you the location, and then when you go, there's checks and there's sort of a in-between, she has, you come in, and she has a meeting where people just meet and talk and get to know each other, neighbors and stuff, and then you actually go into the auditorium for the thing. She had four of the family members from Ascension there who spoke, and the woman surgeon from Children's Hospital, so, very good.
All right, Councilmember McEnany?
I do have a couple things, the deadline for submitting Citizen of the Year award is quickly approaching, it's October thirty-first. You can go to the city of mound website under news and highlights and download the submission form, or you can go to City Hall and pick up a submission form. This'll be the second year for mound to be doing this, and we're excited for that, and last year, just for people to be reminded that, it was Mary Purbix from Farmers Market in Mound who was the nominee, and she was completely honored to be notified. And let's see, there is still time to sign up for the golf tournament that the Lions are doing for the fire and rescue, so if anybody hasn't registered, I, I have two sons that two of their friends can't get off work, so if anybody, if anybody's looking for a couple of good golfers to play with, call me. It's already, it's already taken care of, the fee and everything. And then, I think that's it. I feel like I have one more event or something. I guess that's it.
All right, Councilmember Coslon?
Oh, yeah. I just have two, sorry.
Yep.
Oh, sorry, okay. I just have two questions, but I'm a little like, skittish, and I wanna like, have my update turn into like, another hour long.
It was more than an hour.
The last two meetings, so really, to follow up on one of our residents that I don't, I didn't write her name down, but she had asked if we were gonna kind of follow up and like, schedule that joint parks meeting?
Yeah.
We did talk about that at the last meeting that.
We didn't schedule one, though, did we?
No, but, but we said we were gonna have another one prior to deciding when the next meeting would be.
Okay, so if anyone's asking about that, what's our, we haven't scheduled, scheduled one yet. We're, don't have one on the calendar.
This is what I think.
We're in limbo right now.
Once we get back the data here, then I think maybe we do a joint meeting with them, right? And say, hey, this is kind of what we're thinking.
Okay, but maybe like a twenty-six workshop at this point?
No, I'm talking like.
October's spoken for.
I mean, none of this will happen this year, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, sometime in, I don't know, this year or early next year, I guess.
December, maybe at the soonest.
Well, last year, when did we have the joint, was it April, April, March, and that was the first time they've ever had a joint meeting, so, it was beneficial for all of us to have that.
Okay, and then, I guess just one question on the, the banners and the flags. So, having those banners is gonna be awesome, but what are we doing with the, all the flags that are up right now? Last time we like, not the previous meeting, but before that, we talked about like, the schedule of having things come up and down? Like, are we just leaving our flags up?
Well, my recommendation would be to do flag, banner, flag, banner.
I just mean like, a schedule of when they come up and down.
Oh.
Like, we talked about how like, all the new flags this year, they look awesome, but I feel like if they're always up, they're not noticed, or they're not up.
Really?
Like, are we leaving them up through Veterans Day, or just?
The Fourth of July.
We were talking about the spacing and how like, on one-ten, you know, there's just like, a lot of them, they look great, and it was like, the Fourth, you know, Memorial Day, Labor Day, all that, but like, are we just, are they to stay up, or does like, Ryan or Public Works have a schedule for?
Do they take them down at Christmas?
I guess the wreaths go up next, but.
Right then, so I don't know, I, I would recommend, Jesse, talk to Dustin.
Just seems like they're been up, they're, they're always up.
Do we want them up all year round, or no?
Well, I think, I have no problem with part, part of them up all year long, but I, but I think keeping all of them up all the way down to Surfside is maybe not necessary, but.
Well, that's what I was wondering, is there like, a, does Ryan have like, a schedule for that? Maybe we could just ask him, if you could ask him or something?
It's the wear and tear on them, too, I mean.
It could be cool if they were put back up for Veterans Day, you know, at a certain date, but if they're always up, then I kind of feel like they lose the noticeability, or whatever the right word is, I don't know. I don't have a preference, I'm just curious.
Well, yeah, because, well, to your point, though, they also wear out, I mean, and we had to, when they, I know, Noah had to come up with a little bit of money to help finish them off, and, you know, we got some from the Legion, but, you know, obviously, it'd be better for the city if we didn't have to buy all new ones again next year, so if we take them down, you know, quickly for the weather that's nasty.
Wouldn't you just out of common sense have them removed when the Christmas decorations go up, and then?
That's a good idea.
And then I think they generally put them back up, you know, kind of in the spring.
When the wreaths go up, the flags come down?
Yep, yep. I think, but I think that's the way it has been in the past. But it would make, but it would make sense, because then they're doing, they're not having to duplicate their efforts.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, it takes a lot of time to put them up and down.
Yeah, so. I, I, I would defer to Ryan, too, what makes their life easy and.
Councilmember Q said, put the flags back up for Presidents' Day, potentially.
In February?
Yeah, so take the wreaths, put the wreaths up, take the flags down, in a couple, you know, whenever, a couple weeks, whatever, and then the wreaths will probably wanna take down in January, anyway, right?
Well, they have a schedule.
Or whatever their schedule is. And then we'll flip them back up, the flags back up, or wait till that or Flag Day, or Memorial, whatever you wanna, whatever we wanna.
Just curious if there was a schedule or something.
I, yeah, I do know, they look good.
They look good, they've just been up for, I don't know.
Long time.
Yeah.
Is that your now one, or do you have another?
I'm done.
Councilmember Herrick?
I took up enough time earlier tonight, so I don't have any other updates, other than, if everyone would please re, sure they read that document and provide any feedback, get it back to Jesse, and then I guess he'll get it to me, I don't know, how does that work?
Will make it work.
All right, I don't, I kind of tell, said all my stuff, so. Number eleven, information miscellaneous, do you guys have anything at all? It looks like it's all empty.
Yeah, I don't think so.
All right, cool, that's it, all right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Can I get a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we're adjourned.